Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible Tragedy. This video will cover the first half of the testimony given at the U.S. Coast Guard's public hearing by Amber Bay, former Ocean Gate's Director of Administration. I'm going to make this intro short as for once we have a relatively shorter video as these testimonies go, so I won't take up any more of your time than I need to. I did just want to mention to my regular viewers that the second half of this testimony is already complete and will be live in a couple of days. And I'm also working on the next testimony too. And from now on, these videos may come in short bursts of two or three at a time as, while I'm working on them, I've also now begun working on my follow-up Ocean Gate documentary, which will carry on the timeline from the original one I made back in 2023. And so adding moments from these testimonies to that video while they're still fresh in my mind is proving very useful. But anyway, that's just a short update, enough rambling for now. So thank you very much for clicking on this video. Now let's just get started and hear the testimony given by Amber Bay.
Good morning, Ms. Bay. Thank you for being here today. Lieutenant Commander Wayland is going to start with your questioning.
Good morning, Ms. Bay. Can you please tell me about your educational background and work history prior to Ocean Gate?
Absolutely. I graduated with a teaching degree, moved in quite quickly into a startup that a friend of mine had begun in eyewear distribution, luxury eyewear distribution, was employed there as the company grew and succeeded for 16 years, departed and came over to Ocean Gate to work in an administrative role.
And when did you join Ocean Gate?
December 2018.
And can you describe your role at Ocean Gate and how they have evolved over your time with the company?
My role, I believe they advertised for an administrative manager. I came in to assist in the internal office procurement, human resources, anything that would do with the general administrative tasks that would keep the company rolling and continue to do that, care and keeping of people, hiring, posting jobs, letting people go if necessary, distributing emails throughout staff, negotiating healthcare contracts with our broker, negotiating our lease at the Port of Everett. All those things administratively were the things that I did.
Did that include handling business financial dealings as well?
Um, I did have, I guess what I would say, I reviewed accounts payables, accounts receivables, updated Stockton and our other chief executives on account balances where they were at. And but we did have an accountant and we did have a consulting CFO.
And was the accountant part of the permanent Ocean Gate employee?
Yes.
And what was their name?
Christopher Danford.
Can you provide me an overview of the company's structure as you saw it from when you began in 2018 and how it evolved to 2023?
Um, I will try. At the time when I began, we had a chief executive officer, we had chief operational officer, we had a consulting CFO, we also had a VP of marketing, sales and outreach. It was a large-ish company for a startup of about, I would say, 30 people. And company was divided between operations and there was a director of operations, engineering, and then obviously all the forward-facing people that I spoke of earlier in marketing.
And in 2023, how many employees were with the company?
Uh, 14, possibly 15.
What other companies or organizations were affiliated with Ocean Gate Inc.?
Um, as far as the direct affiliation, I couldn't distinctly say. I know we did work with Janiki, obviously, on the hull build. There was a meeting with NASA and a relationship somewhat built there, and that was, I believe, prior to COVID. I had heard that Boeing was involved in some consultancy work years prior to my employment.
With regards to other Ocean Gate-named organizations such as Ocean Gate Expeditions and/or Ocean Gate Foundation, did you have any duties related to them?
Um, I did not have any specific duties in relation to either any of those organizations. Their money was brought in from our mission specialists to the Ocean Gate Expeditions account, and I would consult that there was, you know, deposits had been made. And then transfer once expedition had happened, I would be the one who would request the transfer from Stockton and he would do final okay whether it was okay for that money to come over into Ocean Gate Inc. to fund the expedition.
So Stockton was responsible for, to your knowledge, Stockton was responsible or for transferring the money from Ocean Gate Expeditions?
Absolutely.
To Ocean Gate Inc.?
Absolutely.
And you said that it funded the expeditions. Did it also fund domestic operations?
Um, not to my knowledge.
What was the primary mission of Ocean Gate Expeditions?
Um, primary mission of Ocean Gate Expeditions, uh, in the beginning, it was explained to me that Ocean Gate Expeditions was to bring in mission specialists to partner with private citizens to offer them the opportunity to explore the world's deep oceans. And that was what I knew of it. And that housed the forward-facing part of, um, the company's operations. Ocean Gate Inc. was engineering and operations.
Did you ever have any conversations with Mr. Rush on why Ocean Gate Expeditions was founded in the Bahamas?
I did not have any specific conversations with him. I was once witness to a conversation that said it was placed in the Bahamas because the dream and the goal was to have bases throughout the globe and having a Bahamian entity would assist in the ease of those operations throughout the bases that they were hoping to build.
What were the main revenue sources that supported the Ocean Gate Inc.?
Uh, investors, investment.
And how were those investors identified or located?
I would not know how the investors were found. Relationships that Stockton had or that he generated on his own.
And how were those funds distributed from the investors or collected to Ocean Gate Inc.?
Through wire transfer.
And what were these funds primarily used for?
The development of the sub, staff training, any engineering needs and practices.
Were you involved in any of the marketing for persons to join as mission specialists for expeditions?
Um, very slightly. The marketing team was separate from me. I would edit their online postings for spelling errors, grammatical errors. There was a small period of time where I took over a little bit of the social media posting while we were in between staff.
And what type of demographic was the marketing targeting?
Uh, it was, you know, with the price point being where it was, it was wealthy individuals, astronauts that had already secured their seats with whomever that was offering trips to space. These were the people we were looking for, explorers, adventurers.
Did you ever receive requests from somebody to become a mission specialist who couldn't, who didn't meet this demographic or who didn't have the funds available?
I really didn't handle much of any of the requests coming in from mission specialists. That was handled more by our expedition director.
And who was that?
Kyle Bingham.
In 2018, the expeditions for the Titanic, the marketing had begun, or it was well underway for the marketing for the Titanic mission. And the support vessels and the expedition had changed over the years from 2018 to 2023. Can you describe to me those changes and those expectations, such as the support vessels originally were possibly the use of a helicopter to take out to a waiting vessel to using the Polar Prince in 2023?
Um, in 2018, again, I started in December. Most of those plans had been made. I had overheard conversations, but most of that had definitely landed with Stockton and the people who were planning that expedition. I was not slated to go. I was slated to stay in the office, make certain rents getting paid and payroll is still happening. So the specifics on what they were looking for with the ship at that time, I was very new with Ocean Gate and don't have a lot of input on that. When we were ascertaining the new ship, again, that happened with operations, engineering and Stockton, and I had nothing to do with that at all. I know they were, it was a very difficult process to find a ship that was both within an affordability price range and could handle our operations. And they flew out and investigated quite a few ships that would meet our needs. And the Horizon Arctic had checked some boxes for us, so they decided to go forward with the contract with them.
How did the cost to become a mission specialist change over the years and why did it change?
The specifics of why it changed, again, are a little bit beyond me. Those are conversations that were, happened at the high executive level. Originally, it was devised to be a certain, like, three or four times what the original price of the Titanic was, and that was derived by our marketing team, I believe, in Stockton at approximately around 109,000. The cost, I believe there was analytics done to understand the cost of the ship of taking our crew out there. And so then that had been increased to 150,000. And after our first year out at expedition, it had been discussed again through Stockton's consultants, through whomever, along with a few of our mission specialists at this trip, and to be able to cover costs should be marketed at 250,000.
And where were these payments made to, for the mission specialists? You mentioned a wire transfer. What account or whose account was the wire transfer made to?
Ocean Gate Expeditions, also known as Argus Expeditions.
What is Argus Expeditions as you know it?
As I know it, is the Bahamian entity that was set up to handle and manage all costs in regards to actual expeditions that Ocean Gate would conduct.
And was that for the Titanic expeditions or other missions to include the domestic missions?
I believe it was for, for me, in my purview, was the Titanic expedition.
What was promised in the crew agreements to the mission specialists regarding their expedition? How many days, how many dives? What were they getting basically out of the, for their payment of $250,000?
Well, that document, again, was not created by me. And what I know it promised was the opportunity for a dive, the opportunity to participate onboard the ship as an acting crew member at whatever level that they were comfortable and capable of doing and qualified under supervision. It included, obviously, meals provided, exposure to content experts regarding either deep sea exploration or the Titanic.
And what would happen if a dive could not proceed because of weather conditions?
Uh, the dive would be scrapped and if there were extra, and we always tried to have a day or two extra on those mission dates, we would reschedule and look for a weather pocket that where we would be able to complete that dive again.
And if they were unable to complete that dive during that expedition, was the mission specialist offered a refund?
No, they were offered a credit.
And if they didn't want to accept the credit, was, I mean, I'm just asking. So if they weren't provided or asked for a refund, it was either a credit or nothing or was there a negotiation between them?
I don't believe there was a place for a negotiation. It was clearly outlined from what Stockton had presented and the company had created that refunds were not available after a certain period and what the specificity of those are. I can't necessarily recall, but it was a credit, an opportunity to come back and join us on another expedition.
Now, would this be a different process if the dive was canceled by Ocean Gate due to a mechanical failure or a fault of Ocean Gate in the expeditions?
Um, again, I can't recall specifically. I know there was some part of some clause that probably referenced that.
Were all of the expeditions successful in that all of the missions had dives that made it to the Titanic depth or met the obligation of Ocean Gate?
No, we did not always make it to the Titanic.
Did you handle or deal with offering the credits to the mission specialists?
I did not.
So in 2021 was the original expedition to the Titanic. In the follow-on year in 2022, do you know how many of those were credited dives to 2022 from the 2021 expedition?
I don't have that specific information.
So if the company's money was already spent on funding the original expedition in which the dive that was obligated was not completed, where did the company get the funds to then pay for the subsequent expeditions to satisfy the customer?
A new mission specialist that would come aboard, we would utilize that money to continue to fund the expedition.
So did you witness a feeling of desperation to complete the dives to meet the compounding demands of the previous year's obligations?
Not a desperation. There definitely was an urgency to deliver on what we had offered and a dedication and perseverance towards that goal. But nothing that would push beyond, we wouldn't do anything from my purview or conduct dives that would be risky just to meet a need. There was definitely checks and balances in place to make certain things were operating as safely as possible.
Can you describe to me what a mission specialist was in your opinion or how would you describe to me a mission specialist?
A mission specialist was somebody who was curious about deep sea exploration, who wanted to join, who understood this wasn't a luxury trip, that this was a boarder ship where they were invited to come. However, as Stockton had put it, there was no chocolate on the pillow. They were invited to be involved and take an active role as much as possible as they wanted to.
Would you describe them as passengers?
I would not.
Recorder, can you please bring up Exhibit 101, which is the 2023 Mission Specialist Crew Agreement? And it states on the bottom, so the deposit, can you explain to me the deposit and then the final payment and regarding the due dates and why those dates were due at that time, if you're aware?
I believe the dates were concocted and of course, I did not make any decisions on this, but they were made as the deposit to the ship was, would be needed to be made. So whatever it was, six months, eight months prior to the expedition, a non-refundable deposit on the ship that we were utilizing would be made, and this would be reflective of when those deposits came in and when the refund would be.
And this was for, this is obviously for 2023. Was this similar to 2021 and 2022? I know I don't have those documents available, but to your recollection.
Uh, to my recollection, it should be. There may be other extenuating circumstances that were discussed with the people that created these documents.
And Lieutenant Commander, just to be clear, you're talking about this particular portion of the 2023 agreement or the entire agreement?
Just this portion of the payment schedule. At the top, under the, at the top of page two, under the what's provided and included, on the bottom, it states taxes, fees and gratuities. What taxes were mission specialists paying?
I have no idea and no recollection of any taxes, fees or gratuities being paid or authorized to be paid by me or anything around this expedition. So I would not know what this is referencing.
Were mission specialists paid in any way by Ocean Gate?
No, not to my knowledge.
As for the gratuity, the mission specialist being seen as mission specialist and/or crew, was it customary for employees of Ocean Gate to pay each other tips for other crew members or?
No, I have never been aware of any gratuities being paid.
Were you involved in organizing or managing any of the domestic operations such as the Hudson Canyon dive or the Puget Sound dive?
No, I was not.
In 2009, in June of 2019, a former pilot identified a crack in the first Titan hull, uh, which was later, uh, which later required testing and downgrading of the hull. Before this testing was done, a letter was sent by the COO to the mission specialists stating that the support vessel was unavailable for the 2019 expedition. Were you involved in the decision-making process for this letter to be sent to the mission specialists regarding the cancellation of 2019 expedition?
I was not at all.
Did you have any involvement in the development of the final Titan hull in 2020 and 2021?
Um, a role administratively, you know, making certain our staff was paid, bringing in help whenever they needed through applicants, but no, no specific responsibilities in regarding the development of that hull.
And now I'd like to get into a little bit more about the Titanic expedition. So how did the support vessels from 2021, which was the Horizon Arctic in 2021 and 2022, and then to utilize the Polar Prince in 2023? Why did Ocean Gate use the Horizon Arctic in 21, 22 and not in 23? And I'll have a follow-up.
Sure, from my understanding, we were very pleased the Horizon Arctic was available and they were very supportive of what we were doing and research and collaborative with their engineering team. Due to COVID and the fall in demand for these ships, because they generally service oil and gas, the ship was available when we needed it and it was available in a price point that the company was willing to pay. In 2023, things had shifted. COVID had since, you know, passed or moved to a smaller concern and the Horizon Arctic was no longer available as it was being used in whatever capacity Horizon Arctic had it utilized for. So the Polar Prince was offered as an alternative and something that we might be able to use.
What expeditions were you part of?
I was part of the 2021 Titanic Survey Expedition, 2022 Titanic Survey Expedition and the 2023 Titanic Survey Expedition.
For 2021, were you on all of the missions?
I was.
For 2022, were you on all of the missions?
Yes, I was.
And for 2023, were you on all of the missions?
I was not. I was there for mission one, mission two and mission three. I then returned home as my daughter was graduating from high school and I needed to attend to those festivities.
In 2021, what were your roles and responsibilities aboard the expedition?
My main role continually through all three was the care and keeping of staff, mission specialists, filling in the gaps wherever things needed to be done, securing and setting up, uh, our mission specialist rooms with their gear, purchasing PPE for our staff and for our mission specialists and, you know, snacks, telling the kitchen what were people's necessarily dietary restrictions, being mindful of birthdays that were happening, general, taking care of the human beings that were aboard was my responsibility.
Did you have any responsibilities with regards to maintenance of the Titan submersible?
Uh, not general maintenance, no.
Did you have any roles and responsibilities with regards to, to a role that would be identified in the dive plan?
I did not in 2021 that I can recall. In 2022, any of us aboard ship would always hope to take an active role in whatever way we could assist, grabbing a wrench, finding the bolts, getting oil and grease ready, moving drop weights to a position where they could be loaded. Those things I did participate in and was happy to do so. Extra hands are always needed on a ship and I was always willing to lend mine. Throughout 2022, I'm not sure what mission, I began truly assisting in getting the gear ready and the dome closure and began assisting under supervision with multiple dome open and dome closures. And at the end, I was assigned the lead role, the very last mission in opening and closing the dome of the 2022 mission.
In 2021, Canada was still under COVID restrictions for entry into the country. Did Ocean Gate provide any guidance to the mission specialists for their arrival for expedition 2021 for border crossing?
Sure, the majority of that was handled by our expedition director and Stockton by giving that guidance. I helped assist our staff on getting to the ship, but not mission specialists.
Are you aware of what guidance was provided to them or what they were told to say at the border?
Um, I cannot specifically recall what they were told. However, we were crossing through Canada to board a ship to operate in international waters and at that time, uh, we were advised that that was acceptable by the Canadian government as long as we were not staying in Canada. And we followed every protocol and procedure that they had in place, which was being tested many times for COVID.
And that was for Ocean Gate employees' arrival?
Yes.
Were any of the mission specialists not able to enter into Canada based upon what they were declaring they were there for?
Uh, I cannot recall. I do not think so, but I cannot recall specifically.
Were any mission specialists ever, or in your experiences, were mission specialists used as part of the dive crew? Any of the primary dive operation plan? So dome closing crew, dinghy operator, any of those major essential?
I don't believe they were ever specifically on a dive plan, maybe for an assistant role. Again, that's just holding the equipment, being told where it is and where to bring it to the people who had been trained and understood how to use that.
Were you ever involved in the risk assessment process to, to create the risk, the risk index for the dives?
I was not.
Were mission specialists part of or included in determining the risk index?
I don't believe so, although, um, I believe there was a collaborative if there was more, if Stockton needed more information and trusted that somebody aboard ship might have a little bit more to work on that assessment, he may talk to them and discuss what he saw as possible risk.
So who was responsible for determining the risk index?
Um, it was a collaborative group that met outside of my view, but I know it involved operations, engineering, Stockton in general, and they would sit the night before a dive and discuss what challenges that they had seen and what challenges may exist the next day.
Did any of the mission specialists and/or crew members who were going to be taking part in that dive, did they have any say in determining the risk index?
Um, not in the presentation, but it was presented the evening before. And it was an open forum, so if there was something that somebody had concerns about, they, and Stockton always opened the floor for anybody to speak up if they had additional concerns at that time. He also explained how the risk index worked, what they were looking at. It was very detailed. And yeah, went through what challenges were previous and what challenges they had assessed. A lot of it was weather-related.
Do you know how to determine the risk index?
I do not.
Did you ever witness anybody raise a concern while the risk index or the dive plan was being presented?
Yes, uh, you know, our operations, people at times would bring up specific things that, you know, they were concerned, not about anything, but oh, the air compressor, you know, needs some service, we're going to have to utilize the second ones. They would bring those things as they were working on deck to that meeting and make certain that they would have their voices heard and that that was put in consideration and that those challenges would be addressed.
After the 2021 expedition was completed, did the Titan return to Everett, Washington?
I am sorry, I don't recall if it returned. I know it did not return between 2022 and 2023.
What was your role with Ocean Gate in the end of, after the 2021 expedition? Was it still the same as before?
Absolutely.
Were you aware that the Titan was making a, a road trip across the country, doing marketing and events at different?
Absolutely. I was part of the road, the Titan Road event and show on the East Coast. I attended all of those events and supported the staff, the logistics of moving the staff, getting ahead of the sub when it was arriving and working with our team to make certain it was in an appropriate place to be displayed.
And what was the purpose of those events?
Um, it was a twofold purpose. We were there to speak to friends and families of our mission specialists, give them a stage to speak to their experiences. It was also, we went to the University of Rhode Island to encourage young mariners and deep sea explorers and people in those sciences. and deep sea explorers and people in those sciences to, you know, see cutting edge technology and be excited about their role and their futures and inspire the young.
And throughout that trip, how was the Titan transported?
It was transported on a truck bed.
Was it in a container or was it just on the back of the truck?
It was on the back of a truck and it was covered in whatever operations thought was an appropriate cover, so it wouldn't receive damage.
Now to the beginning of the 2022 expedition, how was the Titan transported to Canada for the 2022?
I believe it was trucked to Canada.
And you were involved in all missions in the 2022 expedition. Was there any differences between the 2021 and 2022 logistically with regards to the expedition?
Nothing of notice as far as what we were doing, you know, challenges when you are diving that deep and doing things, you know, are always variable, but there was nothing of significance that operation was any different.
And you had just stated that between the 2022 and 2023 expeditions, the Titan remained in Canada?
Yes.
Were you involved in the discussions or did you have, were you involved in where it was stored and why it was stored?
I was not.
At any point were you made aware that it was stored in the parking lot of A Harvey?
I believe I probably knew that because I would have to make a payment for the storage facility, but that would be my full understanding of that it was stored. I was, didn't know it was a parking lot, but it was at A Harvey.
And do you know why it was kept there?
I believe there were, believe that I was told around that there was no reason to bring it back at this time, that it was cost effective to leave it there and we needed to come back and develop a mission, so we left the sub.
Did you ever make a payment to A Harvey to have them cover it or shrink wrap it or protect it?
I do not believe I did, but again, my recollection is a little sparse at that time.
Did you have any discussions with Mr. Scott Griffith regarding the Titan being stored at A Harvey?
I did not.
Were you involved in any discussions or negotiations with Memorial University in St. John's in the memorandum of understanding?
I believe that I may have reviewed a contract or two, but that again was given to me by Stockton and generally my position was to file it and make certain and possibly if there was a change to the document to review them and notate any changes and then resubmit it to the chief executive officers.
And do you remember about what time or what the timeframe was and when that MOU was signed with Memorial University?
I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Do you know if Mr. Rush was specifically waiting on the MOU with the university to be finalized so he can claim that as an educational exemption for any fees before it is released?
I have no awareness of that.
Now I want to get into expedition 2023. So as we previously stated, expedition 2021 and 2022 utilized the Horizon Arctic. 2023 utilized the Polar Prince. What type of configuration changes were made to the operations to accomplish, to basically have it work with the Polar Prince?
Well, from my observation and understanding, again, as much more of a people operations person, it was understood that we would not be bringing the sub onboard like we did on the Horizon Arctic, that it would be towed behind via our platform. And our team had discussed at length what that would look like and how that would be. I was not part of those conversations, but understood they were going on and what the challenges would be with the tow configuration. It was not the first time it was towed, but it was the first time it was towed to the Titanic.
Are you aware if those discussions included the master or representative of the Polar Prince?
I am unaware who was in those meetings.
Can you describe to me what the towing configuration was for the Titan to be towed, Titan atop the launch recovery system to be towed behind the Polar Prince?
I wouldn't be qualified.
Why was the 2023 expedition started earlier than in the previous two years?
I believe it was the availability of the Polar Prince is why it started earlier.
Did you have any concerns with towing the Titan, the 370 nautical miles to the Titan, Titanic wreck site?
Certainly, I mean, I think anybody would have, you know, concerns that this was going to be more challenging and more difficult in some aspects. Stockton showed us that they were up for, he was up for the challenge and the team was up for the challenge and so I continued to carry on in my role.
How would you describe the weather conditions and what challenges did this provide for the expedition and the towing operation?
The seas were much higher that earlier on than I remember being on the Horizon Arctic. It was much colder, there's a lot of rain, so just, you know, being on the deck physically for me personally, you know, is always a challenge, had to make certain that you were layered upon layered when you're out there and making certain you're changing out of very wet clothes into drier clothes.
And do you believe that the, you had mentioned the seas, do you believe that the seas had any effect on the towing operation?
Well, it was obvious at times that it did, that we would have to slow down or speed up or possibly redirect our path, you know, every evening we would have a meeting and we're redirecting because there is a very big storm in this area and that would not be safe for us to go, so yes.
Did you witness any damage that was caused prior or by the the seas or the towing operation?
Damage to Titan itself?
Yes, sir.
As far as damage to Titan itself, I believe it lost a fairing due to a wave coming up, I'm not, no specifics. Fairing is the plastic cover that goes over the sub to make it, just like a car bumper, make it look, you know, clean. So I believe one of those was lost or damaged during the towing configuration due to high seas.
Do you remember any incidences or any incidents with the towing of the Lars and the Titan during the three missions that you were on in 2023?
Yeah, I believe one or two times the platform itself, where it's a subset of on, had taken on water and had started to list, which means kind of one end dragging down. And we had to make corrections and, you know, face that challenge and bring it back up.
And how long did it take to to correct that?
I, you know, it was within a day. I couldn't tell you because there were in and out and lunch breaks and people working on that and that's not my area of expertise, but within a day, probably eight hours at maximum.
In your experience, did it make it more difficult to conduct maintenance or even conduct the, the pre dive operations onboard the Lars as in its towing configuration from the Polar Prince?
There is definitely the challenge of having to load and to dinghies to service and do things, bring our tools out there instead of being on, you know, the stable deck of a ship. So in the Polar Prince, we had to go up to the platform to do all the maintenance and corrections and fixes and tests that needed to be done. So it definitely had its challenges, also with the weather and we were very much out in the elements, had challenges in of itself.
So that concludes the first half of Amber Bay's testimony. And while I'm not going to linger on this first half for too long and keep some things to say for when it is concluded in full, there are just a few things I wanted to mention. With the position held at Ocean Gate by Miss Bay and the duties that she performed, finances were always a subject that was going to be covered. And I found that this once again shone another light on the now glaringly obvious problems that Ocean Gate were having financially. Things like the company's workforce shrinking and any gaps being plugged by contractors when required. As stated in this testimony, there was also an urgency to complete dives, which gave me flashbacks to Aunt Adella Willby's testimony when she spoke about a conversation she heard aboard the support ship during one of Titan's dives, where, if I remember correctly, there were issues both contacting and locating Titan. That conversation centered around, rather than locating the sub, discussing how Ocean Gate had upheld their end of the bargain, that they had gotten close enough to the sub's destination and therefore no refunds would be given. Also discussed was the rise in prices for mission specialists, which eventually rose to $250,000 for a place aboard Titan during its Titanic expeditions. The reasons behind the price increases included the cost of the support ship and crew, though even if true, I think spiraling losses were also playing their part. In part two of this testimony, this is highlighted further as Stockton Rush is said to have invested his own money back into the company to keep things going and people paid. Miss Bay also speaks about how integral investors were to funding the Ocean Gate operation, and so I think this circles back to that whole thing about there being an urgency to get Titan diving. And also, as I spoke about in the last video, we hear about Titan being stored in a parking lot in Canada between missions. But again, I will speak about that and the other cost cutting measures taken in more depth next time. I'm also going to keep my own opinions on Miss Bay and her testimony until the next video too, where I will make a more thorough outro. Still, for now, it was once again confirmed that Stockton Rush had a hand in practically everything, something that no longer comes as a huge surprise. And when speaking about joining Ocean Gate, Miss Bay states that she was informed that companies such as NASA and Boeing were linked to Ocean Gate's project in some capacity, which has been another thing that has emerged in past testimonies, that being the act of name dropping by the company. But anyway, I will be back very soon with the second and final part of this testimony. So until that video, thank you all very much for clicking on this one and bye for now.